All right. Roll call.
Counsel Barton? Counsel Barton?
Present.
Present. Counsel Capano?
Present.
Counsel Chakoudis?
Present.
Counsel Calucci-Abson? Counsel Seer?
Present.
Counsel Field?
Present.
Counsel Lapierre?
Present.
Counsel Lozey?
Present.
Counsel Net?
Present.
Counsel Staubid?
Present.
Counsel Walsh?
Present.
I am the man behind the screen, so the current...
Good question. So, I'm gonna open the meeting up to the Collins Group, so they can do a presentation.
Yeah, hi, yeah. So, my name is Mark Fine.
You wanna speak into the microphone, please?
Yeah, so, my name's Mark Fine. I'm the Municipal Collaboration Director with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. This one not working. Maybe not. Is this one? That won't go that far.
If you're close, you don't have to be right into it. If you're...
Well, yeah, I mean, I can try with my voice. Is that all right? Can you hear me?
I think you're on TV too.
You're on TV, they won't be able to hear you.
You can sit.
I'll sit.
Yeah. Make yourself comfortable.
Well, yeah, I mean, this thing is not...
We have that.
It's not good, yeah. So, you have the presentation?
We have it.
Oh, well, yeah, so, as I was saying, my name's Mark Fine. I'm the Municipal Collaboration Director for the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. And I'd like to just introduce my colleagues as well. So, with me is also Lori Zivkovich. She's our Municipal Services Specialist at MAPC. And Ralph Wilmer, who's one of our Senior Principal Planners at MAPC. So, y'all have the presentation in front of you. And basically, you know, I would, I'd like to go through the introduction to what we were asked to do by Mayor McGee, but then talk about the work we've done to date, some of the findings we've, we've, we've kinda discovered in a lot of the meetings we've had with Department Chairs and others, and some of the recommendations we'd like to make, you know, we've made to the mayor, and we, and he asked us to come before the City Council, and so did City Council President Seer as well. Well, yeah, so, we were asked by Mayor McGee to review the city's planning capacity, to look at planning capacity across city agencies and authorities, and including, you know, looking at how that resource is deployed across all the different planning agencies and functions in city government, and also across its, its kind of related, you know, authorities and boards. To look at, you know, how they coordinate across those agencies, to consider whether there's any gaps in service delivery, and look at lines of responsibility to the mayor and other senior leaders, you know, from the planning function. And I guess, you know, I'd say like, you know, what, you know, why were we asked to do this? I mean, I imagine in part, you know, Lynn has a lot of great opportunities, but I think there was a sense on behalf of a variety of stakeholders, and I think our, our meetings have confirmed that, that there was, you know, more than Lynn could do to enable itself, enable the city to make the most of the opportunities that was presented. So, that's what we were asked to review. And I guess the goals of our, of our review have really been to develop recommendations and options for Mayor McGee, you know, for building the best planning function possible, you know, both in the short and long term. You know, maximize existing planning resources and capacity that's available, identify new potential resources and opportunities, and most importantly, to provide comprehensive support to the mayor and senior officials, you know, in shaping Lynn's long-term growth and development. So, that's both what the project has, has been looking at, and also what the goals of the project were. And I don't know, are you, are people familiar with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council? Is everybody familiar with that? No? Well, yeah, I mean, just maybe a little background on that. I mean, we're the Regional Planning Agency for Greater Boston. We represent 101 cities and towns, including Lynn. We are, you know, our bread and butter work is, is planning work. So, we do a lot of planning work for Lynn. We've done planning work in the city. Ralph has worked on a number of projects in the city already, open space plans and other work like that. But here, I think, we were, we were asked to combine some of what Ralph does with also our capacity to, you know, help cities and towns think about operational functioning and how well a city or town is, is operating, whether there was anything they could do better or differently. So, we do that with a variety of our cities and towns, kind of as consultants to our cities and towns, you know, they're our members. And, you know, this is one of the projects that came through that pipeline. So, that's, that's in a nutshell, part of what MAPC does for its cities and towns. And, you know, we were very glad when Mayor McGee asked us to, to work on this project. So, just turning ahead to the activities we have done to date, you know, with the mayor's go-ahead, we were asked to meet with all the major city officials that have a planning-related function. And, you know, that included, you know, all the, the kind of core city departments like ISD, you know, Community Development, but also some of the, the quasi-public authorities like LAND and EDIC or LHAND. We worked, we met with Public Works, we met with the Water and Sewer Commission, which is obviously independent as well. We met with the Planning Board. We most recently, just a couple of weeks ago, met with the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we've also talked to some of the HR staff here in, in City Hall, just to understand more about the landscape of planning. And beyond that, we also talked to, you know, and, you know, knowledgeable outsiders, folks who've worked with LAND in a capacity outside of the city. You know, one of those people who some people here might know is the former Housing and Economic Development Secretary's Chief of Staff, Amy Ward Whedon, who's now at Mass Inc., you know, which is a think tank. You know, she had been part of the lead team that I think had been working with Lynn on a number of planning-related projects and helping the state provide support to Lynn on planning. We met with the TDI Fellow, who some of you might know, you know, Joe Mulligan, who provided us with, you know, a lot of knowledge. And we've also met with the Collins Center Analyst, because Collins Center, as you may know, has also been, you know, working with the mayor and others to conduct a broader review of sort of the shape and structure of Lynn's city government. So, we met with them, because obviously, our work overlapped. So, that's a lot of the engagement we've taken forward. And I think as far as, you know, the information we've reviewed, we've obviously looked at your city ordinances, special acts, and charter documents. We've looked at planning structures from comparable cities, just to see how Lynn, Lynn stacks up. And then we've looked at, you know, job descriptions and other, you know, when, when you think about what a planner does and what, what type of skills and capabilities they have, we've looked at kind of what other cities and towns have as, as resources. So, that's what we've been doing to date. And I guess, you know, this next slide here, which is just, you know, I, you know, this is just kind of a, you know, just kind of, you know, shows the, the planning-related functions across the city bodies. And as you can see, there's, there's obviously a bunch of planning-related activity, you know, in, in core city agencies. And obviously, I think as, as statute holds and as the city charter holds, like ISD is the official planning department now, and Mike Donovan, who's there, who we met with, is, is the, the planner for the city. But obviously, you know, when you think about planning more broadly than just kind of permitting and, and kinda, you know, zoning control, you know, you will get into some of the work that Community Development does. The Department of Public Works obviously plays a role, 'cause there'll be impacts from projects on, on, you know, city works. You know, even parking can play a role in planning in many places, because parking policies will shape, you know, how people use your streets and, and where they go. Then beyond those, obviously, EDIC, LAND, and Water and Sewer, they're all, you know, city, city bodies with various, you know, structures and appointments. You know, obviously, EDIC is totally mayoral-y appointed, and, you know, LAND is, is a mix, and then you have, you know, mix with, with some state appointees too. And then, you know, Water and Sewer, obviously, I think the council appoints the majority of members there. And then clearly, you know, this place, the City Council is, is very important in the planning process with your special permitting power. You know, obviously, the Zoning Board of Appeals and Planning Board are also, are also involved. So, I mean, this was just, just to kind of lay out the landscape of, you know, when we talk about planning in Lynn, here's, here's the kind of active parties. There could be some we're missing, and, you know, feel free to tell us if we are, but this is, you know, who is identified, and basically, I think you're, you're familiar with most of their roles and functions. So, I guess through the interviews and, and meetings we had, you know, we were, we received a fair amount of feedback. And I'd say one thing that was great was just how willing and open all the different city officials we met with were in giving us that feedback. I mean, you know, everybody, you know, made time for us. Everybody, I think, was really candid and frank about what they think works well and what they think could be done differently. And I think, you know, this slide here, if you go to just kind of the engagement feedback slide, you know, that's where we, you know, we, we learned much of this because we listened to, to the department heads. We listened to some of the boards we spoke to. We, you know, we met with the City Council President back in the summer too, and he, he had a lot to share. So, here's what we kind of captured as the main takeaways from a lot of the engagement we had received. And I mean, I'd say, you know, first of all, you know, what is working? Because there are a lot that is working in, in Lynn. You know, one, you know, major development is progressing across the city. I mean, even without sort of a centralized planning department or a big, broad planning department, the city is still progressing. A ton of new development across the city. I mean, I would say another thing that really struck me was just, you know, the experienced staff that really know the city. I mean, you have a lot of, you know, very experienced individuals who've had time, they know the city, they know its ins and outs, they had, they've had involvement with much of the, the projects that are coming forward now. So, that was something that was very striking. And I think the other thing is, is just the willingness on behalf of department heads and others to welcome sort of, you know, new ideas and, and, and being kind of open to, you know, to, to, you know, what, what can be done better. You know, 'cause there really was a shared desire, I think, on behalf of everybody to grow the city's tax base, you know, and look at kind of a diverse, a diversity of housing stock as, as goals that people exemplified. So, that was what I think, you know, we, we took away as, as what, what was working. You know, as far as the challenges, you know, we were, we were informed about and learned about in our, in our meetings, you know, one was, I mean, I guess a big one was just, you know, the sense, and this was something that, you know, the players involved actually communicated, that there's no clear front door by which external parties can, can kind of come through the gates and, and engage with Lynn on, on planning-related matters. That, you know, while, you know, day-to-day planning functions were, were held in ISD, you know, a lot of other planning-related functions were just, were dispersed into various agencies. And I think, you know, there was a sense, you know, for most people, that there was a level of, you know, that there was inconsistent cross-departmental communication and coordination, and thus probably some missed opportunities and, and crossed wires on some things. And I think, you know, while a lot of great things, you know, are happening, I think everybody, I think, said they, they thought that there could be a greater focus on the big picture, and that, you know, that, that people were project-oriented, and a lot of projects were moving forward, and were given time and attention. But the big picture on kind of, you know, future-oriented development across the city of Lynn was not being, you know, taken forward strongly. I mean, implementation was always an issue. I think people, you know, had comments about, you know, the, the amount of special permits, some of the, the Planning Board functions. You know, I think the Zoning Board of Appeals, it was interesting when we met with them. I mean, they felt like they don't, they don't get a lot of support, was what they said, you know, on planning-related matters. So, I think they struggle sometimes to, to make the decisions they're asked to make. And I mean, I would say one, one big issue that everybody highlighted was just transportation oversight and transportation planning as an issue that, you know, that, that there wasn't a, there wasn't anybody really, you know, staying on top of. So, so those were kind of challenges that were identified. And I think a lot of that speaks to some of the, just the gaps that, you know, the city has in its planning functions and capabilities. You know, right now, you, you don't have a central department that's responsible for all the functions of a contemporary planning agency. Sure, sorry.
Will you take questions now or wait for after, or...
It's up to you. I mean, I can take them now. I mean, we do have definitely...
I just got a question on the last bullet. When you mentioned this statement, "Transportation oversight is everywhere and nowhere." Could you elaborate on that a little?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think the sense with that was that it's not that transportation planning isn't happening. I mean, you've had studies done in a variety of ways on transportation issues. Some of those have been, you know, you know, convened by, you know, Community Development. You also, you know, obviously, when there's a project, you know, Public Works and others will get involved. But as far as like transportation planning, that isn't necessarily happening. So, there's a variety of parties that are involved with transportation, but there's not necessarily like the ownership of the issue in any, in any one department. So, that's how I, I put it. But, um, but yeah, as far as, as far as gaps, I mean, I guess, you know, a lot of, a lot of these challenges stem for sort of the fact that there isn't, you know, a, a planning department that's responsible for what you would generally find in a contemporary planning, planning agency. You know, there's no certified planner on the city payroll, you know, the city doesn't have a master plan. I think community engagement was mentioned in a lot of places as not necessarily something that always happens consistently. Sure.
I'm sorry. If I could jump in with a question, I know we only have like 10 minutes left.
That's right.
I'm looking through your presentation here, and, and what you're talking about is the examples where the Board of Appeals, they're not, they're feeling left out, that they're not getting any oversight or professional aid. And one of your pages here talks about either a chief planner or a principal or senior planner.
Yes, sure.
And, you know, right now, we do have a planner or acting in that role. Could a future planner maybe attend all of the Planning Board meetings and all of the Board of Appeal meetings to lend professional advice to the board members? Is that something?
Well, I, I mean, I definitely feel like, when you think about the various parties that are involved with, with planning in Lynn versus the capacity that, you know, the city has to cover all those bases, it seems like there's a gap there. And I would, I would imagine, like, yes, in a, in a perfect world, you would have a, you know, you would have planning staff of some nature or another, being able to support and, and, and all the various agencies and bodies that are...
So, you're identifying all of this, are you gonna come back with like a, a recommendation, a report that, or are you just basically giving us, telling us our shortfalls and...
No, no, no. I mean, I'm gonna, we, you know, if you move to the further slides, I mean, our, our whole point is to come up with recommendations. So, I mean, I can talk to what those are now. Why don't we move ahead to that?
Yeah. Since we're all jumping in, I don't want to run out of time. So, a couple of things that you identify under gaps on engagement feedback, is, is no master plan for the whole city. So, you know, I, I know there's a master plan for the waterfront and the downtown, but there is nothing that integrates the whole city, that somebody that can tie everything together. So, I didn't know, I, I always thought that was lacking, you know, with the city, and definitely could use, you know, some thinking along those lines, even how to integrate the rest of the city into the downtown and the waterfront, 'cause they're, you know, it's like two separate bubbles, you know, rather than one entire city. So, I didn't know if you could elaborate on that. And then, when you say zoning, other than the downtown and the waterfront, needs to look, be looked at more comprehensively, I didn't know what you would have in mind, you know, for that.
I mean, I think, I think the, you know, from the feedback people gave us, you know, we, I mean, one was, you know, lacking a master plan. There's been a lot of plans done in a lot of places, but I feel like, as you said, nothing ties them together. I mean, I tend to think, you know, if you did it in a, in sort of a, a step-by-step manner, you know, master plan would come first, and then you would do a, a fuller zoning review that sort of works, you know, to deliver the goals of the master plan. So, it would be, you know, you'd kind of come up with the broader vision, and then you'd think about, you know, what zoning changes need to be made in, in, in different parts of Lynn to kind of, you know, deliver that master plan vision. So, that would be something down the line that the city would look at. I mean, I would say like, I think some of the comments where there's, you know, sometimes between the amount of variances and, and other things that are issued, like, maybe I think there was a sense that the zoning is out of date in, in some parts of Lynn, and it could better reflect, could better reflect the activity that's actually being, being taken forward in Lynn. And we haven't looked at your zoning in depth, you know, we, we haven't done that. So, I couldn't tell you exactly. But this is, you know, this is all based on the feedback that we've gotten from the different parties who work with... The suggestion that a lot of people had was, you know, the city really could use, you know, greater planning capacity and support, and it could use it in the short term. And so, you know, we identified, you know, what we thought was, was potentially two positions that the city could, could aim to, to, to bring support in for. You know, one was kind of a planner level, you know, a chief planner level person who could kind of start doing the long-term master planning and start, you know, supporting the coordination across agencies. And then another, you know, planner, you know, more of a, a principal planner or, or mid-level planner who could, you know, specifically support Mike and ISD, support the Planning Board on, on things like site plan review, on zoning, and I think specifically focus on transportation planning, 'cause that was a gap that had been identified. You know, so we had provided here, you know, just kind of what we think those positions could look at, you know, if you were aiming for that, what their experiences and capabilities would be, and what the general salary ranges are for people, you know, individuals that fit that. And I would say, you know, obviously, I'm sure, you know, there's always a question, well, how would this be funded? And I mean, I think, you know, there are, have already been conversations that have taken place about, you know, looking for, you know, some funds from some of the city agencies that I think have been willing, willing to make contributions to that in the past. I believe the previous mayor had actually posted for a planning position, you know, with some funding that would come from, I think, potentially EDIC was one party, and the Community Development Department was another party. So, obviously, that, you know, as far as our meetings went, that seemed to be an option that was still on the table. As one potential funding source, as far as another would go, you know, there are parties, you know, external parties that I think see Lynn as a, as a great opportunity for growth and development, and they would be willing to potentially support or give grants to the city to, to finance planning capacity in the city. So, I think there's, there could be a way to fund it through a blended, you know, mix of public and, and sort of nonprofit funding. And I think the city has opportunities to explore those and potentially, you know, fund, you know, these positions for a few years, you know, as it considers the broader, the kind of broader plan to, you know, long-term. So, I, you know, we, I think, you know, the mayor and others have had interest in, in supporting Lynn in that capacity. I think it's an opportunity that would be worthwhile for the city to pursue. So, that's, you know, where we look there. And as far as, you know, what, you know, in the short term, I mean, we, we envisage, you know, two planners, you know, working in the center of city government, so supporting the mayor and all the senior stakeholders to, you know, drive a long-term vision, support transportation planning, and, and coordinate across the agencies. That would be what the aim would be if you were able to bring in, you know, two planners of the type we're talking about. Yeah, and they would be, you know, principally, I think, you know, working with the mayor and, and senior agency heads, you know, in an advisory, a coordination, and, and kind of a visioning role. And I guess the question, if you just think about, you know, where does this go long-term? And we will come back to the mayor with longer-term recommendations that could be implemented down the line. You know, that's a question for the city to think about, like, what could planning look like in the future? You know, if you had a planning and development department, you know, what would be the pieces of that that would be brought into that? You know, obviously, long-range planning is always something that's there, planning control, transportation, housing and economic development, you have strong entities that do that now, so that's a question, whether you want to, you know, continue with the structure you have now in those areas or, or look for something else. And then Community Development's another, another piece of the mix. So, this is all to think about in the future. I mean, we will come back to the mayor with some recommendations for, you know, what, what he, what could be considered. You know, obviously, if the city wants to create a planning and, and development department, you know, it's gonna take probably charter change and potentially special legislation, because some of the, the way the, the current city is structured is, is, is built around, you know, that legislation and, and, and that charter. So, that would be obviously a longer-term, you know, question for the council and the mayor to consider. But I think, you know, we will come back with some recommendations for what we think it could look like. I mean, some of that will be informed in part by what we see a lot of cities that have similar characteristics to Lynn, Lynn's similar populations, similar opportunities to Lynn, you know, what they're doing on planning and whether, you know, that's something Lynn could, could look at in the future. But yeah, I mean, that's basically the, the presentation. I'd love to, you know, any questions that people have further, I'm glad to answer. I mean, we did have a question for the council too, because you're obviously a key stakeholder in, in the planning realm and trying to, you know, get your perspective on, you know, what type of planning support does the Lynn City Council receive? And, and what are the issues, challenges, and gaps in planning that, you know, that you all see? Because the council's a, a key player in this too. So, you know, whether you have time to answer that now or, or you'd like to provide us feedback later, we're open to that. But I'm glad to, any questions or...
You can take Brian, and then I'll come back.
It's a two-part question, thank you. You said that MAPC is advising over 100 communities here in the, in the Commonwealth. Of that percent, of that number, what percentage already has an established planning department? And of those communities that do have an established planning department already, on your engagement and feedback, what is working for them? What are those challenges? And what are those gaps that those communities that have those planning departments already established facing?
Yeah, I mean, Ralph Field, yeah, I mean, Ralph, Ralph works with a lot of these cities, so I defer to him.
Out of the 101 cities and towns, it's hard to say exactly how many have planning departments. But what I can tell you is that out of the larger cities, Marlboro and Lynn are the only ones that don't. And then some of the smaller, more rural towns would not have a planning department. A lot of the communities that we work with within our region, which is basically within the 495 belt, some of them, a good number of them have one-person planning departments. But then there are obviously some that have much more. So, an example of, of a city that we've looked at in some detail is the city of Salem, which has a fairly robust planning department. They have a director, they have, you know, varying levels of planners, from junior planners on up to senior planners, and then they also have planners with specific areas of expertise, whether it's housing, historic preservation, transportation, things along those lines. Does that help?
Now, ma'am, I would say, I think Lynn is in a rare position with not having sort of a, you know, fuller planning department. I think it's, it's, it's pretty unique in that way.
Sure.
Thank you. So, last administration, as you alluded to, had discussed bringing in a, a planner funded through EDIC and Community Development. And one of the questions I know that was getting kicked around back then was, who does this person really work for? Is it EDIC, 'cause they put up some of the money? Is it Community Development, 'cause they put up some of the money? Is it ISD, 'cause that's where they were gonna be housed? Is it the mayor's office? So, and then you have, you know, all these different departments pulling this person in all directions. I think the feeling was that nothing would get done. So, with the possibility of a one-person planner, where do you see that person working? Is it out of economic development?
Sure. I mean, I think, I mean, I think the feeling we had and the recommendation we made was that the planning capacity you bring in should work directly to the mayor. And I think in part, it should build off some of the reforms the mayor's already established, which I think, you know, we, there was a lot of positive feedback around those from department heads. Like, for instance, there's a, you know, the mayor is now on a weekly basis working with the Development Council, and that includes, you know, the, the major, the, the major departments that are, that are, they're meeting regularly to discuss planning and development issues. So, I mean, I think they're already getting together and being coordinated, you know, within, by the mayor's office. I think another thing that's happening is then, you know, on a bi-weekly basis, then they bring in even other agencies like Public Works and the Water and Sewer Commission, you know, to all get around the table and just make sure that everybody's on the same page when it comes to some of the issues and implementation, you know, measures that need to be taken. I think this, the feeling is, you know, if you were able to bring planning capacity into the, you know, into the center of, of city government, you would, you would be able to, you know, strengthen that, that cross-agency coordination, which is, which I think everybody that we spoke to said was something that needs to happen. And I think what, what you'd really have is, is not only would you be able to get the people around the table regularly, you'd be able to then do the follow-up and, and continue to see that, you know, any decisions or actions that are, you know, are pursued, are, are followed through, which I think a lot of people are like, implementation sometimes gets missed and, you know, currently, and, and that would help solve that. I think it would also start to be able to drive like some of that long-term visioning stuff, which, you know, in a lot of, in a lot of cities and towns is really very closely associated with, with, you know, a chief executive, but also working to other key, key parties. I mean, I do think it would also be somebody who could work closely with the council, you know, and, and supporting the council on planning issues. So, this is, you know, I mean, they would, they would broadly be responsible for, you know, for working with the, you know, the various stakeholders across city government.
Thank you. And just one other quick question. You, you, I forget how you referenced it, but it was kind of regulatory restrictions. Did you mean residency when you said that?
Well, yeah, so, I mean, I mean, obviously, an issue to consider is gonna be the residency requirement. I mean, I think that's, I think that's going to be an issue. I mean, you know, when we, when we put in kind of the salary ranges for, you know, the, the positions we identified that we thought would be useful, I mean, if you think about, I mean, it's not, you know, probably the people you'd be identifying, we'd want to get experienced talent here in, in Lynn, you know, and, and folks who probably already have those salaries. So they wouldn't necessarily be moving because they're getting paid a lot more. I think they'd be moving because, you know, Lynn is just a great opportunity to do a lot of great work. Uh, I think the challenge is whether, you know, you're limiting the pool of talent you could consider if you had a, if you, if you kind of forced them to have to move to Lynn or, or live in Lynn. I mean, I think given, given sort of the, you know, what we've seen in the planning field, I mean, I think that would be a, a potentially significant limit on, on who would be considered for that. And I guess, given some of the needs and, and, um, you know, that the city has, I mean, it would, it would, you know, I think, I mean, from our perspective, it'd be worth considering whether the residency requirement, you know, would be waived for such positions. You know, that would, that would be a, a thing to look at.
Thank you.
Just, yeah, so, um, I don't know how many cities and towns are, are like Lynn that have, I mean, like Lynn as far as being an older industrial city, but having the waterfront. So I don't know how many planners have a background that would understand like chapter 91 and open space as related to the waterfront? And how, you know, is that a skill that's hard to get? Or, you know, is this something that I think we would want if, um, we were looking for a planner? You know, and I, I don't know if that's, uh, mentioned anywhere in that. Because we had situations where, you know, we had a development on the Linway, and they've addressed open space, you know, at Heritage State Park. So when the developer builds the, you know, the condominium complex, you know, they satisfy the chapter 91 requirements by putting a park there and a boardwalk. And then, once it's built and everything's filled up, nobody remembers, you know, why the park is even there. There's no parking for it. And it's unusable, you know, but that was a critical piece in order to pass that to get through years and years ago, Seaport Landing. And no one even remembers, you know, you know, that part of it. So it's totally unusable. So you would need somebody that, I think, has that sort of background and knows, you know, you know, the importance of open space and that it's just not, uh, something that you would do to satisfy some development, you know, that you actually want use of the space and, uh, be able, you know, be able to make the, the best use of it for the city. You know, so I don't know how many planners have that type of background, you know, or would be thinking about that.
Um, hard to say how many planners would have that background. But I, I know, um, having, uh, worked in Massachusetts my entire career, I know that such people exist. And I think the way to, uh, ensure that you get what you need is to have a, a fairly tightly drafted job description that really lay out what the qualifications are. And clearly, uh, being a waterfront community, uh, would be one of them. And I, I think there's, I would imagine that there is a pool of candidates out there that could meet the city's requirements.
Any other questions or feedback, gentlemen?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we're glad to come back if, if required at a later date, if the mayor would like us to, when we make further recommendations. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.